I'd like to call this village board meeting of March 18th, 2021, to order. Would the clerk please take the roll?
President Jackson?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Sullivan?
Excused.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Muradato?
Yeah.
Trustee Pojak?
Yeah.
Trustee Schroder?
Here.
Would you all please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the hearing, first on the meeting, is a public hearing by the mayor and board of trustees for the purpose of receiving comments from the public concerning the renewal of the Comcast of Illinois/Indiana's cable television franchise within the village of Glendale Heights. This proceeding is hereby commenced pursuant to the requirements of the Federal Cable Communications Policy Act and the request for renewal of the franchise agreement of Comcast of Illinois/Indiana LLC, a current cable television franchisee in the village of Glendale Heights. Notice of this proceeding was published in the Daily Herald in the same manner as all other items on this evening's village board agenda. The purpose of this hearing is to afford the public the opportunity to offer comment and insight in order to, one, identify future cable-related community needs and interests of the residents of the village of Glendale Heights; two, review the performance of Comcast under its current cable television franchise. Does any trustee have any questions or comments with respect to either the future cable television-related needs of the village of Glendale Heights, the performance of Comcast under its current cable television franchise agreement, or the proposed renewal of said franchise?
No.
No questions, trustees? Okay, open the floor to comments from the public with respect to either the future cable television-related needs of the village of Glendale Heights, the performance of Comcast of Illinois/Indiana LLC under its current cable television franchise agreement, or the proposed renewal of said franchise. Is there anyone in the public that would like to ask any questions? Being none, and clerk Schmidt, you did not get any written comments?
Oh, I did not.
Okay. At this time, there being no further comments from the public, the village will take the comments/matter under advisement. I will entertain a motion to adjourn this hearing regarding the proposed renewal of the cable television franchise agreement with Comcast of Illinois/Indiana LLC. Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This public hearing is closed. Community announcements. Trustee Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The Glendale Heights Police Department, along with numerous other police departments across the country, have seen an uptick in people posting messages online and on social media instead of calling 911. These platforms are not monitored 24/7, and in times of an emergency, every second counts. Please remember that the Glendale Heights Police Department cannot take a crime report over social media. In order to make a report, please contact the non-emergency number at (630) 260-6070. If you need immediate assistance or have an emergency, please remember to always call 911 and don't rely on social media. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Trustee Light?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
To enable an effective street sweeping schedule, parking on streets is prohibited during the months of April and May between 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM on one specific day. Color-coded, no parking signs have been posted in four different zones throughout the village. Parking is prohibited on Mondays for the red zone, Tuesdays for the blue zone, Wednesdays for the green zone, and Fridays for the brown zone. To find your zone, visit the village's website. For any questions on street sweeping program, please contact Public Works at (630) 260-6040. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Clerk Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The village of Glendale Heights is partnering with the Northern Illinois Food Bank for a food distribution event on Saturday, March 20th, from 9:00 AM until noon at Camera Park. You do not need to be a resident of Glendale Heights in order to receive assistance, and no identification is required. We ask that you please wear a face covering and remain in your vehicle. Please drive slowly and follow the directions from the staff and volunteers upon arrival. We want to thank all of the supporting organizations for their help in making sure no family or individual goes hungry. For more information or to volunteer, please contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060. The next coffee with the mayor and village board will be Saturday, April 3rd, at the Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 AM until noon. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the mayor or village board, please call the mayor's office anytime at (630) 909-5303. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Trustee Muradato?
Oh, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Register today for the annual Glendale Heights Golf Club Spring Fling. This year, the event will be Saturday, April 17th, and Sunday, April 18th. Due to the current restrictions for large gatherings, we will be offering the shotgun start with three starting times of 48 golfers at each starting time. The starting times are 9:00 AM, 10:00 AM, and 11:00 AM. The cost is $65 per person, or $260 foursomes, and includes 18 holes of golf, a cart, lunch at the turn, a drink ticket, a raffle ticket, prizes, and a tea gift. There are not many sponsors remaining, so if you want to play, sign up today. Call (630) 260-0018 to get your team signed up. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Trustee Pojak?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
With the spring season right around the corner, the village of Glendale Heights would like to remind residents that many projects in and around the house may require a permit. Common projects needing permits include work on decks, sheds, patios, residing of your house, and re-roofing. We would like to remind you, do not pay your contractor until they contact Community Development to ensure all work is up to code. If you're not sure if your project requires a permit or if you need to apply for one, please contact the Community Development Department at (630) 260-6030. Thank you.
Thank you, Chester. Trustee Schroder?
Thank you, Mayor Jackson.
You're welcome.
Safety Town Easter Egg Hunt is back with new social distance guidelines in place to ensure the health and safety of all participants. Now, children ages eight and under are invited to join us on Saturday, March 27th, from 8:30 AM to 11:30 AM for our annual egg hunt. Pre-registration for a 15-minute time slot is required, and masks must be worn by all participants. For more information on additional changes to the Safety Town Easter Egg Hunt and to pre-register, please visit the village website at www.glandalehighs.org, or contact Tanya Miko at (630) 909-5459. Also, we're going to have breakfast with the Easter Bunny, so register today for our new social distance breakfast from the Easter Bunny. This new event will be taking the place of our annual breakfast with the Easter Bunny so that we can have a safe and healthy event. The drive-through event is Saturday, March 27th, from 8:30 AM to 11:30 AM at Glendale Lakes Golf Club, and features a breakfast of pancake, sausage, syrup, and chocolate bunny from the Easter Bunny himself. So, pre-registration is required, and is $3 per breakfast. For more information or to pre-register, please contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mary. The village of Glendale Heights is committed to being good stewards of our earth's natural resources by striving to improve our regions' air, water, and land, reduce greenhouse gases, minimize waste, and reduce energy consumption. During the month of April, I am joining other mayors nationally to participate in the 10th Annual Wildland Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation to promote awareness of water conservation efforts. This will be the village of Glendale Heights' third year participating in this national campaign. I encourage residents of Glendale Heights to take a pledge by challenging yourselves for a period of one year to become environmental stewards by decreasing water use and contaminants from our waterways. All you need to do is register at www.mywaterpledge.com and click on the top green icon, take the pledge, then type in Glendale Heights, Illinois. I hope to see Glendale Heights lead the way in water conservation through our online pledges. So, please join us. Next, I need to call for a public hearing on April 1st, 2021, at 7:30 PM by the mayor and board of trustees for the purpose of receiving oral and written comments from the public concerning the annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2021, and ending April 30th, 2022. So, if everybody will please mark their calendars, the public hearing will be before our next board meeting. We have a proclamation to proclaim March 27th, 2021, as Earth Hour. Is everybody fine with that?
Yes.
Okay. Is David here?
Mr. Flores is here, yes.
I can't see that far. David, if you would come up and share the poem you wrote with us. It was nice you came to coffee with the mayor and board last time and read that, and was very, very nice.
I just wanted to give my appreciation as long as the fire department police are here, too. My dad had a heart attack about 10 years ago. They were Johnny on the spot, real professional, and as long as I've lived here, they've always been that way. And when everybody's sleeping, and the boys in blue and the fire department are always there, and they never let us down, so I'd just like to say thank you, all of you. You know, you're doing a great job, you know, thank you.
Good, thank you.
So, last board breakfast, I came over and I was thinking about living here. You know, it's sort of been rough the last four years, but you guys have been doing a great job. You know, felt real stable here in Glendale Heights and real safe, and that's an important thing in this world nowadays, I think. So, I thought I'd write a little appreciation poem for living here, and this is the way it goes. "The wind blew wild and free when we moved here in '63. Where we stand now is the village dump. People would shoot rats with .22s. I guess at the time, there was nothing else to do. Ward's tree nursery was right next door, snakes, salamanders, and pheasants by the score. I remember a 10-point buck running down our street, followed by three men with rifles. At the time, I thought it was pretty neat. I was eight years old. The village on the edge of farmland was beautiful to behold. Silent nights with crickets and coyote sound. City lights had not reached here. Darkness and stars still could be found." I'm sort of old, so I don't remember, you know, so I gotta read it. "Free to ride my bike anywhere, not much traffic anywhere. Open fields, open skies everywhere. Very few trees on this old farmland where many veterans and families came to stand. My father is one now, 95 years old, and the place we called Glendale Heights was always good for our soul. It gave us a house that was stable and safe, and has always presented a friendly, diverse place. It may not seem much to live in a peaceful place where children can grow in a secure base. Some places may be warmer. Here, the sun doesn't always shine. But if you ask me where I would want to live, Glendale Heights suits me just fine." So, thank you for listening.
Thank you for sharing that with all of us.
Oh, that's okay. Thank you. Thanks for governing very well.
Oh, thank you. Next, we're honored to have Dr. Williams from Queen B. School, Superintendent of Queen B. School, District 16, and Michael Somerville, the school board president for District 16. Yep.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mike.
Sorry. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you allowing us to have Dr. Williams and school board president Mike Somerville here today to recognize our partnership with them. As you've always said, and you've made this key, preparation is the key to success, and good response to emergency depends on relationships established long before the emergency happens. And that has been the case with all of our governmental partners. The years of governmental agency partnership meetings, emergency preparedness conferences with all of our partners in school, the fire districts, the library districts, township, and county partners have been invaluable in not just our preparation, but in establishing those relationships. And those relationships that we forged during that time came into play during this pandemic, whether it was at the start of the pandemic when we were having weekly crisis management team meetings with all of those partners, or, as was the case very recently in early February, when I received a phone call late one Friday evening from Dr. Williams, and he said, "I can get 3,600 vaccinations." And I said, "Well, let's see what we can do." And that Saturday morning, we met with the team, Keith Knouts, Deb McKenzie, Kevin Hooper, Dr. Williams. We met over at the Sports Hub with the representative from OSCO Drug who was able to, who had secured 3,600 vaccines for school districts 16 and all the feeder districts for Glenbards, and also, 2/3 of those were to go to the community as a whole. So, we finalized the plans, laid the groundwork, and by Tuesday morning, we had a line of people, and we were putting shots in arms. And it was fantastic. And those first three days and 3,600 vaccines were such a success that OSCO looked at us and said, "Well, I can get you 2,400 more." And so, we said, "Bring it on." And we added two more additional days, doing 1,200 vaccines a day. In all, we did over 6,100 vaccines to not just teachers in the Glenbarre School District communities. Obviously, District 16 was involved, and I'm sure Dr. Williams will go into a little bit more detail as how he ended up being the one coordinating all of that for District 87 and all the feeder districts. But the important part of that is the partnership that we had, and we have forged over the years, and we were able to put it into play to assist the residents of Glendale Heights and this larger community so that we could get essential workers, teachers, and our vulnerable population over the age of 65 as many vaccines as we possibly could. And we're not done. We had second shots today. We've got second shots again tomorrow, and we're still working on more. As you know, Mayor, not only this 6,100, but we had a different clinic of 500, nothing but seniors. We had a micro clinic down at Shorewood Towers. We brought the vaccines to the seniors there. So, it's been a very successful rollout locally, and it has a lot to do with the partnerships that have been forged over all this time. And I know I keep going back to that, but it is so true. Deb McKenzie with OSCO and the Health Department, and we've just been able to get so much of it done. And that is, and the large share of it is because of the partnership that we have with you. So, we just, on behalf of the mayor and village board, we would like to, first of all, not drown everybody out as I try to talk in this microphone today, but present a plaque in commemoration and with appreciation that we present to Queen B. School District 16, "This Momento of Celebrating Our Collaborative Efforts in Providing Over 6,100 COVID-19 Vaccinations to the Community, February Through March," presented by Mayor Linda Jackson.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a really good speech. Mayor and trustees, a year ago this night, we were here, and I was asking you to let us cut the curbs so we could engage in a $10 million facilities project, and spirits were not nearly as high. What Administrator Maron shared is the truth about it. I will never tell the truth about how we got all that vaccine so quickly. I'm just glad we were able to get into arms within four days. But Mike Maron, Keith Knouts, Glendale Heights Police Department, Glenside Fire Protection, this was truly an example of local governments coming together to make it happen for the community. And I can tell you the feedback we're getting at Queen B. and throughout the Glenbarre feeder districts is that people really appreciate that public servants put the needs of the community ahead of their own needs. What's remarkable, and I'll tell anybody to listen, I think Glendale Heights is a magnificent village. It's the best community I've ever been fortunate to serve, and I'm very lucky to have an outstanding board president and a school board to serve. We've been trying for the last year to pull together, stay together, because the end is in sight, and opportunities like this to come together and make it better, they just pull us forward. They pull us forward through the crisis. So, thank you for honoring our contribution. I have a couple surprises for you. One, I spoke to the pharmacist, Dr. Osben Mia, who, on the way over here, said, "Hey, I think I can do it in another clinic. Are you guys interested?" And I don't want to speak for Mike Maron or you, Linda.
We're interested.
Yeah, I said yes, so it'll be fun. But also, too, Mayor, you know, last year, I think it was this board meeting corresponding date, we entered into an intergovernmental agreement, or at least got the board's approval. Our project has turned out beautifully. Please come see it. And it's really worked from the traffic circles to the new gymnasiums. The other part was, the village gets to have a community garden. So, I am submitting to you this evening our completed application for annexation of the plot just south of Queen B. School, and now we can get rolling as long as it stops snowing.
It'll stop. Thank you so much.
You can do that, too, Mayor?
Yep. A lot of prayers.
All right, you see it. I'm handing it to you, and I'll give you the full-size copy digitally. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. And it is, that's what makes this community so special, is people pitch in, work together to make it better. Mike?
Thank you, I'm.
Whoa.
You know, I'm no stranger to this town.
No.
I've been around since 1963, spent 33 years as a police officer, 22 years on the school board, and the best... This is better? No, okay. I mean, the best we did was hiring Joe Williams. He is superintendent beyond any superintendent that I have come to know. And I've known a lot of them. And, you know, Joe is, we give him a task, he's done it. Are doing improvements, the vaccine, so I mean, he is a, I call him a workaholic. So, yeah. So, and on behalf of the board, I'm going to thank you for this award, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's your turn, Doug.
Officer Garcia and Tomich, can you come up? So, I'm here to present some lifesaving awards to two of our police officers. But first, I want to say to Mr. Flores, thank you very much for the kind words. I can speak on behalf of the fire department and police department, that your words are sincerely appreciated, and we're here to ensure that you stay safe and your father stay safe and healthy 24/7. So, thank you for the kind words. The poem was excellent, very well-thought, and you have talents that I'll never have, so I appreciate that when it comes to rhyming. So, we're here to talk about a lifesaving event that took place back in October. And we held this award mainly because lifesaving awards deserve to be recognized in front of the board, in front of cameras, in front of the public, and not in roll call like we do some of them, because it's a little bit above and beyond when it comes to what the officers did. So, we've saved it for a while because we haven't, and doing it on Zoom just doesn't do justice to the officers that did what they did. Also, too, not to dismiss the paramedics that were there, but two of the paramedics were also on this call or in the back, so thank you very much for being there and assisting our guys, because we make fun and joke, but trust me when I tell you, we are sincerely grateful every time you guys show up, because you guys have way more skills than we do, and way more equipment, and we appreciate you guys being there all the time, so thank you. On October 3rd, around 11 o'clock, Officers Garcia, Sergeant Pajasek, and Officer Tomich, you guys can take your, people need to see your mustache, dude. Oh, my goodness.
Oh, my gosh.
Responded to an address on Camden Court for a drug overdose. They were actually very close to the call. They responded very, very quickly. They did not receive an answer at the door. The door was open. They let themselves in. They heard somebody screaming for assistance in the back room. Upon entry to the back bedroom, they found a subject laying on the ground, supine position, face was blue, eyes and mouth were both open, not moving. Upon further triage, they discovered he had no pulse. Officer Garcia gave a sternum rub and checked for a response to pain. There was no response. Officer Garcia began CPR, and Officer Tomich administered 4mg of Narcan. During CPR, the subject's eyelids became fluttering, and he gasped for breath. Was breathing poorly, rolled onto his side to assist for clear airway, then he returned back to an unresponsive state. Then he returned back to an unresponsive state. Uh, uh, he stopped breathing and Officer Garcia again started CPR. Uh, Officer Garcia continued chest compressions until Glenside Fire Department arrived on scene and administered more Narcan, which then brought the subject back to life. And then he was transported to the hospital. So Officer Garcia and Tomich, uh, were on the scene, uh, provided CPR immediately, uh, issued Narcan immediately and Officer Garcia actually administered CPR twice, uh, which just goes to the calmness that these officers had on the scene. They didn't panic. They knew where everything was at. They brought in the equipment. They are trained in CPR every year. We have CPR training coming up soon. And the use of Narcan is trained during the course of CPR training. Uh, they had the tools and equipment and the knowledge and the skills with them to save a life and to, uh, you know, work with the fire department to ensure that, uh, the, the life was saved and that the person is now able to continue with the rest of their life. Uh, so from that, it's not every day that you, you get to save a life. It's not every day that we, that you do CPR. It's not every day that, um, you come across situations that you put yourself in, uh, that creates a response of what do I do? And these officers, these officers knew what the what to do was. And it, it goes to training. It goes to calmness. It goes to, uh, they're not even that all of experience. Just goes to training, uh, and being there and being prepared mentally and physically to do the job correctly. Uh, so for all life-saving awards, officers are, uh, allowed to wear life-saving pins on their vest and outer vest carriers. Officer Garcia. Officer Tomich. And we also have life-saving award plaques for each officer. Uh, life-saving award presented Officer Jared Tomich, by and through your actions, dedication duty, took substantial steps which led to the preservation of life and the case number. You can put it back together. Congratulations again. Thank you for uh, Glendale Heights Police Department proud and the residents proud, going out there and doing your job every day. So congratulations and, uh, thank you again for being the timely first responders and well-prepared and trained officers that you are. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
We have a great police department in case nobody noticed.
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do. Thank you so much, everybody.
Again, thank you for the firemen to be here and, and represent and support. We're always there to support you guys. So thank you.
We now go on to public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board on an agenda item, please come forward. Seeing none.
Also, Mayor, there's nothing on the, uh, board meeting questions for agenda items.
Okay. Bye. Have a good night, everybody. Thank you. Um, you have the consent agenda before you. What is your pleasure, Trustee Schroder?
Motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call vote. Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. Okay. There is no old business. So we go to new business, number one, which is a motion to waive first reading on new business item number two. Trustee Light?
Still moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? First reading is waived on item number two, which is "An ordinance extending temporary executive powers pursuant to 65 ILCS 5/11-1-6." We waive first reading, so this would be ordinance number 2021-32. Trustee Light?
Still moved?
Second.
Did somebody second?
Yes, Mary.
Oh, okay. Uh, any discussion? Roll call vote. Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Ordinance 2021-32 is approved. Number three, "An ordinance reserving and authorizing the transfer of volume cap in connection with private activity bond issues and related matters." This is first reading. Number four, "An ordinance authorizing the execution of a non-exclusive cable television franchise agreement between Comcast of Illinois/Indiana LLC and the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois." And this is first reading. We are now back to public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to discuss an agenda item, please step forward.
So, um, Mayor, there is nothing, uh, on the internet, on the email for an agenda item, but since there is no COW, um, I do have one comment that was, uh, emailed in. Uh, and if you wouldn't mind, um, Chief Flint also has something to, to add.
I would like to open it up since we do not have a committee of the whole. Anybody with any comments or questions on any subject, please feel free.
So the, the comment that was received, uh, via the board messages email account is from Carl. Uh, and he was asking if Glendale Heights Fest and Fireworks, July 14th through the 18th, is a go for 2021.
You want me to answer that?
If you would like, yes.
If it is anywhere in my power to have it, we're going to have it. Hopefully with all the vaccines being, um, given out, that we'll be in a much better place by then. However, if we are told we absolutely cannot have it, then we'll have to see what else we can do in place of it. But we are very much looking forward to Summerfest and I know a lot of people are also wondering. And we're going to hold off as long as we're planning on having it. And if we have to cancel, it will be as, we're going to hang out as long as we possibly can.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sure.
Mayor, as long as we're on that subject, uh, how about the car show and Oktoberfest? Is that still iffy?
Well, it's going to be depending on, you know, if we have Summerfest, if everything's better, then you're going to have September Fest, or Oktoberfest and car show and stuff, but we just don't know.
Let's keep our fingers crossed.
I, I want to be, have life back to normal. And especially for the kids. Okay. Doug, did you have something?
I did. I just wanted to, uh, bring you, Mayor, and the board up to date on a new program we're going to be doing in cooperation with our social services provider, Northeast DuPage Youth and Family Services. Uh, for a while now, we've been working on a co-responder follow-up model for mental health and trying to reach more people with in-person visits and home visits and police officers and social workers working together. And part of the new House bill that's recently passed, you know, that's a big part of the new House bill. We've been working on this for a while and part of the new grant that we received from Bloomingdale Township Mental Health Board was to add that additional 20 to 30 hours a week of a social worker to help us provide that, uh, co-responder type model. So working with Northeast DuPage, uh, last week, uh, we came together on how to go about doing it. And starting on the 25th, we're going to be working, uh, with Northeast and our social worker and police officers on implementing that co-responder model and being out in the public and doing follow-up visits on recent calls and cases and some issues that we've had within town, uh, trying to get more people more help. So I just wanted to bring you up to date on that, uh, starting on the 25th of March.
Great job. Thank you. That grant from Bloomingdale Township has definitely helped make your job a little easier.
Well, actually, uh, I don't want to get too off topic, but that funding mechanism, uh, should be the model for every community social work program. Because it helps everybody and it's funded by everybody. And, you know, Bloomingdale and Glendale Heights make up two-thirds of Bloomingdale Township. And money directly from Bloomingdale Township is going right back into the community and helping those community members.
Thanks. Great job. That is it. A motion to adjourn would be in order. Trustee Schmidt?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.